Alright, hi everybody. It is March 11th already. Time's flying, 6:30, March 11th. Do we have a motion to call the meeting's order?
So, move.
Mr. Gilmore, second.
Second.
Harrison, all is in favor.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The Central Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members and everyone to interact in a polite manner, even when there's disapproval. Valued the participation of our community. I want all participants, who are marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and every member participates to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. We usually go right to walk-ins. We're going to do walk-ins after, like, to do a recognition. Kevin Lyndon from Facilities. I'm sorry, I... Where is Kevin?
Kevin's ready.
All right, Cam, come on up.
So we have Kevin Lyndon here from Facilities, 25 years of service. You know, Kevin's a really great employee for us. You know, just the end of guy comes in, gets a good job on every single day. He shows up when he's called upon. We're really proud to have him and we're really happy for him. We congratulate him. And I have Jesse here from the library today too. She's going to say a couple words about Kevin as well.
Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to congratulate Kevin on this amazing milestone. I mean, 25 years is just so incredible. We've been really, really lucky to have Kevin at the library for all of these years. He is a custodian in every sense of the word. He makes sure that the building and most importantly, the people who visit and network in the library are comfortable and safe every day. And I can tell you that when we do community surveys, we always hear how proud people are of the building. And Kevin is a massive reason why that's true. And we're just grateful also to Kevin's family, who are here tonight, who have no doubt had to put up with many absences on Kevin's part when he's dealing with emergencies or countless, in 25 years, literally countless snowstorms. So we just really want to say thank you and congratulations on this incredible achievement.
On behalf of the board, in 25 years, to be able to have that type of service and to get back into the community. And every time we go in, I go in with my kids, and the library, and it's always almost just immaculate. But you can tell the care and the love that's there. And to be able to do that for the community shows. There's just a level of thoughtfulness and care that can't put... You can't put in a resume. Can't put in, you know, if you're looking for people who want, you want to work in town, that you can tell that they're not just working, but they're, you know, are prepared with it. And so, for that, I really want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, we have a little treat for you. Well, thank you and appreciate you from the board of the town to present that to you.
Very much.
Congratulations on that point. Alright. We're going to go, we'll go to walk-ins now, then we'll, just so you know, our town administrator is home sick. I think he did zoom in. Kind of shit, it's a little shaky.
He does not look very well, I'm like...
I know. It's really...
Looks a little tail.
A little tail. A little shaky, it's like it's a rooter. Shaking, that's okay. Do we have any walk-ins? Walk-ins, there's not any, just once, going twice. That will go with hopefully a brief report from the town administrator. How are you?
Good evening. I'm great. I felt better this morning, but as the day goes on, it's like a draining battery. So I'll stay as long as I can. I'll do a very brief town administrator update for you. I think the biggest thing off the bat is this Sunday is the St. Patrick's Day parade. March 16th, steps off at 1 o'clock from the common on First Parish, down through the harbor, ends up at the community building on Jericho Road. It's going to be a great day. It looks like the weather's going to be warm and from what I can see, the rain's going to hold off. So please come out and enjoy the parade. And remember that on the 16th, the library is closed, as Branch Street is closed due to the parade. So remember that also, when you go to the parade, you can't go to the library on Sunday. I'll skip the water treatment plant update because you're going to get that from the horses mouth itself tonight. I just want to remind people though, that we are down on Cedar Point, working on the seawall, the intersection of Turner Lighthouse and Jericho Roads. Contracts about there for a week or so, starting the work. Total project time is six weeks, so it should be done and be out of there before the start of the beach season. The Water Resource Commission is once again hosting their annual rain barrel sale. This is some new information from the last meeting, so there's two different ways that you can order your rain barrels. The town did send out an email on March 4th with detailed instructions. So if you subscribe to our emails, you would have gotten that. Orders must be placed by Sunday, March 30th, for an April 12th pickup date. That pickup date will be at the transfer station. Go to the website, greatamericanrainbarrel.com/community, follow the instructions. The barrels are normally $119, but a discount if this program. You can get a painted barrel, gray, green, or brown for $89. An unpainted barrel that's black for $84, and a terracotta barrel for 80. Again, they're available at the transfer station, April 12th, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. If you are planning to connect your barrel to a downspout, you'll also need to purchase a flexible downspout elbow or a rain diverter. If you want to buy a composter, our pickup date of April 26th works better for you. You can order through the Water Smart program from the North-South River Watershed Association. The rain barrels are the same price. And Earth Machines, in conjunction with the Garden and Green Expo, will be selling the composters. This sale will be through Sunday, April 13th. All orders must be placed by then, and the pickup will be on Saturday, April 26th, at the North-South River Watershed office on South Street in Norwalk. So two different ways to order, two different times, but now is the time to order your rain barrels for this coming year. Reminder that the annual town election is Saturday, May 31st. Nomination papers are available. If you wish to run and be on the ballot, you must take out nomination papers for the town clerk's office. Candidates need 100 certified signatures of registered voters in the town. And the deadline to submit those is Friday, April 11th, 2025. Finally, a truncated annual town administrator report. This is also the last week that you can walk your dogs and go walking at Woodrow's Walk. Woodrow's Walk will close to golfers at the closing day, this Sunday, March 26th. After that, the crew will spend the week getting the course ready for the 2025 golf season. So if you like that, Woodrow's Walk, enjoy it, you have the rest of this week. After that, we will be getting the course ready for an opening, hopefully at the end of March, weather permitting. And just a reminder, please keep off the greens and out of the sand traps. And under situ at town bylaws, your dogs must be leashed at all times. So enjoy the golf course for the last week, and then after that, if you want to enjoy the golf course, you'll have to be carrying a stick and hitting a little white ball. That's my report for tonight. I'll be here as long as I can, but if I drop off, I either shut it off or I pass it out, I'm not sure which.
Thank you. Well, not going to break any HIPAA violations, I hope, but whether or not, if it's the flu or COVID or anything else, it's a reminder for folks as well that it's still never too late to get vaccinated. Still get, even this late in the season, stuff's still going around. Jim is our reminder.
I'm glad to be of assistance to everybody.
Taking the hit for the team. Any questions?
Let's get better, Jim.
Alright, any questions, town administrator, from the audience? Alright. Thank you, Jim. Now, can't stop, yeah, it's 6:50.
Can't stand ready to go.
Yeah.
So folks know, by law, I can't, we can't start the public hearing until 6:50, which is the first thing our agenda, but... Yeah, come on.
You can start it at 6:45, we have a plan for 6:45, so if Cam finishes, we can move. I'll be really quick.
Here, good news, you still got a fill of eight minutes.
Yeah. Oh, alright.
Say goodnight.
I can talk, I can talk slow if you want. Good evening. So on March 4th, Dehanna Situ received competitive bids for bond and note underwriters for $5,761,000 of general obligation bond anticipated notes. The fan includes I'm stalling, am I using my eight minutes? Includes $1,761,000 in renewal borrowings and $4 million of new borrowings for the Pushing Happening School. Town received six bids. The winning bidder was Fidelity Capital Markets at a coupon rate of 4% and a premium amount of $47,683.30, resulting in a net interest cost of 2.85%. The funds will be available to the town on the 28th, Arch 28. That's a great, that's a great borrowing, a great percentage. We're thrilled.
So...
Off we go.
2.8...
Page 83.
Page 83. In our backup. So now, this is not public. The last time we were talking, that rate was fantastic, said me as well.
Yes.
Tell us a little more about, in general, I mean, rates are all over the place. So 2.85 minutes. These are, it's physical stewardship.
We were, we continue our rating with standard of course, the AA+. We didn't have to go for a rating on this borrowing because it was only, yeah, close to $6,000. But we're in great shape and we continue to borrow at great rates.
Well, it up.
With our great financial team. Pam, right, Jim? Not listening to me.
Yes, I am, I'm listening, but I'm on mute, so you don't hear me coughing.
Yeah, just well done.
Thank you.
Nancy and Pam do a fantastic job doing this. I really just sit there and smile and sign the paperwork.
But I must admit, Nancy did a lot of this work because I have what Jim has now, so. Good evening, Cam.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would love to motion again, not to be
Yes.
Overlooked it again. For folks at home that need to know this, it's all the work for us to get our laundry done. This is, it's going to be saving over time, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's all the difference. So it's, it's much more meaningful and I think people realize that, but it looks, I'd love them to.
Motion to approve the votes prepared by bond council to the town in the form presented in this meeting, which votes, among other things, make the formal warrant of the notes to the purchaser, Fidelity Capital Markets and Division of National Financial Services, LLC, and approve the interest rate and maturity and other details of the notes as determined in the competitive sale held on March 4, 2025, and shall be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
Mr. Gilmore.
Second.
Ms. Harrison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, Jim.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Okay, it's not as time?
We have two minutes.
We have two.
That clock's on.
One minute.
That clock's on. One minute, that clock is five minutes on.
You can call...
We can call people up, so yeah, so then we'll just start. So Ryan Hilton, owner-manager, so now we're on the Combedic Entertainment License and All Alcohol Beverage, Split Rock Social. So come on up and then we'll stall for a minute. Charlie, a lot of things coming up.
We do have, Mr. Campbell, there is a piece of 45 bonds related to this conflict that you might want to just look at.
I said, yes.
They endorse that, so.
Okay, they have to set up.
They have to set up.
I don't want to break it, just make sure we, we will get that in. I don't want to be doing the topic before 45. We have some
I don't want a cookie.
Ms. Harrison's birthday.
Tomorrow, unless tomorrow.
Maybe, should we see if people are proud, let's know.
Please do. Celebrate, celebrate my birthday. Come on, take a cookie. How are you? Just in time.
Is it okay if I pass you through the other later, our application?
Yeah, yeah, gift for everybody. You already have a copy of a conceptual with the application, it's just sort of, I'll get it from you as well, but...
Sure.
Copy of the conceptual plan for the end of the year.
We have to leave, we have to leave.
Yeah, no, nothing's changed, I just want to give it to the...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Good to see you, Cam. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Not going to ask you. Part of work for the camera or any folks that might notice, so it's up to you.
Either for the camera or for the point of view, if you can pull up, if you can just work on something?
Yeah, definitely, they have all the senior back and they're...
It's brought me from a very cool apartment. You don't make any, aren't you, no? 6:50.
Oh, I thought she said...
The average is 6:45.
The average is 6:45.
A little bit, Ms. Campbell, log in.
That'll easily be fine. I'm in.
Aaron and Ryan.
And I'm Mark Ross, I'm an attorney, I represent Aaron and Ryan, and also with Split Rock.
Excellent, alright, so we will follow this public hearing before, and we're going to be talking about the general on-premise seasonal alcohol beverage license. And then we'll get into the Combedic Entertainment License as well. So tell us, tell us about the project, tell us what's...
Correct, well, so if it's okay, I'll start speaking, if it's okay with you, and then whatever questions you have, obviously you can ask Aaron and Ryan. As I mentioned, my name's Mark Ross, I represent Situate Split Rock Social, Inc., or call it Situate Split Rock for easier, and its owners, Aaron Herman and Ryan Hilton, who are also here. In connection with their application for the seasonal section 12, general on-premises, all alcoholic beverages licensed at 360 Gannup. So it's okay with the board, I'll talk for a few minutes about the proposal, and then in the application, and then you can ask whatever questions you want, or if you want to interrupt, ask questions down, totally up to you. So as you know, 360 Gannup Road is currently in empty lot on the corner of Gannup Road and Mordecai Lincoln Road with nothing in it. It's currently owned by Go 230 LLC, which is a single-member LLC owned by Aaron Koller, who lives, a Situate resident, lives on Mordecai Lincoln Road. He's here today with his attorney, right behind me. As you also know, 360 Gannup Road used to be the spot for James Pub, which is the restaurant and pub that burned down in 2017. It was a very popular gathering place, served all types of alcohol. But since it's burned down, there's really been nothing within walking distance of that area where someone can meet, meet friends, family to sit down, socialize, have a drink, other than beer and wine, and eat some food and have great entertainment. With the application, my clients are proposing to build some of that by opening a seasonal, April and November, open-air alcohol container bar beer garden at 360 Gannup Road. They want the spot to be a place where people can meet outside with their friends and family, socialize, eat, have some drinks, and listen to some entertainment. The concept of an open-air beer garden, high-end container bar, has already been tested by Aaron and Ryan at 12 Parking Way in Cohasset. In addition to being the owners of Situate Split Rock, or also the owners of Cohasset Split Rock at 12, at 12 Parking Way in Cohasset, both are upstanding and well-respected resins, the South Shore. Aaron lives in Cohasset, Ryan lives in Henin. Split Rock and Cohasset have been open now for three years, maybe somebody have gone. And as you know, it's a fantastic location to bring your friends and family, hang out, listen to some good music, and have a good time. They've had no problems that they've been open, there's been no liquor law license violation. They have no noise complaints, and it's been a big success in the community and surrounding communities. They want to bring the same thing to 360 Gannup Road, and so make that the same type of location where people can hang out with their friends and family, eat, drink alcohol, and just have a good time and listen to good entertainment. Now, I passed around the plan section in the appendix to the application, which you already have. It's also the blowups here, and I also just passed it around copies of what was part of the plan section in the application for everyone else to sort of look, just so I sort of go through and give you a better idea of what they're planning and doing. If you take a look at the document, which is conceptual drawing and proplated proposed floors layout of container, you get a good sense of what the container will look like, and this is the document here, it's got this, this wording at the top. And it's also that document there, or that one there on the right. So if you can take a look at the container, you'll see it's a 8 foot by 45 foot high-end dipping container. It's built by Mini Warehousing, Inc., and will have a kitchen, a cooler, dry storage, multiple bathrooms, and various other things that are needed to operate the container bar. The costs will be split between the landlord, which is again, Go 230, and Aaron Koller, and Situate Split Rock. The estimated cost and breakdowns of who's paying for what, it's contained in the cost section of the appendix. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into each other, I didn't really go into your business.
Yeah, okay, so you see, so you see who that is. And so, if you want to stop talking, that's fine. And so if you look there, you'll see the front of the container, the open, and so where people can order from there, and the drinks and drinking will be brought to them by tip-certified servers. And in the outdoor seating areas, the conceptual is down below. Just want to point out a couple things about the plan. First, it is conceptual in the sense that the actual, it's meant to be an idea of what it's going to look like, and what the container will set will look like. The reality may differ slightly from the plan, and, but, they plan on making it a high-end similar to what they did at Cohasset. Everyone wants to make it a great location for everybody to sit and enjoy and have a good time. Second thing I want to point out is that everything will be done in compliance with local laws and regulations. And so there may be some changes needed to the container to help with that. And in particular, apparently, the Situate Port of Health has also already mentioned they have an additional bathroom, so the container will be, will be modified to add three bathrooms, not two. Everything else will remain the same, and all, and all the spots will be adjusted accordingly. All alcohol will be stored in the container, and so, and a cooler. It will be locked up at the end of every night and at the end of every season. So there will be no alcohol anywhere else other than the container and the cooler. Those will have a lock on it when there's no one, no one available at Situate Split Rock, open and operated, and at the end of every season. If you take a look at the second document, which is the preliminary site plan, that's the one on the left, and that's the second page as part of the appendix. This is a blowup of what the site will look like at the end, hopefully at the end of all this. And a couple things I just want to point out about it. First, the entire thing is going to be enclosed by a fence, and this is to make sure that no one can get on sites other than the one entrance, which is going to be on Gannup Road. In addition, so you see the container at the back, the front entrance to the beer garden is actually the front on Gannup Road. There's going to be nice paper walkways that go through it. There's going to be various plantings, there's going to be a fireplace, and various seating. And again, like the container, these costs are going to be split between Go 230 LLC, Aaron Koller, and Situate Split Rock. Costs are broken down in the appendix section, and so, but it'll be the same, same idea. So as you can see, it's really, it's going to be a great spot. It'll be really the improvement to the neighborhood, add something that people need and they want. And it'll be, it'd be great for the area, bringing outside, outside business and people. One other point I want to make is in addition to being a great improvement for the neighborhood, it's not going to cause any harm to the public harm. They're taking great steps to make sure that all, all secure in the container bar, and also that no one can get on the spot by putting the fence around. It shouldn't have any impact on parking or on traffic. There's 200, there's about 150 public parking spots within the area of Gannup Road. And so, and they will make sure to tell everybody to use those public parking spaces and not park on Mordecai Lincoln. They'll make it clear that that's not a place to park because that's a local resident, and they want to make sure that people don't park there. The other thing that my clients want to emphasize is that they understand that sound could be, noise could be a potential concern. And they're going to do everything in their effort to make sure that noise is kept at a reasonable level and doesn't interfere with any residents. Their hours of operation are going to be reasonably minimal, in that the latest will be open for any day is 9:30. So that's long before anybody goes to sleep. And so, so they'll make sure not to disturb any, any speed, and keep noise down as much as possible. Now, one thing I do want to potentially mention is that there's a bit of a mix-up as to what the operating hours are. Because when they first initially apply, they apply for the hours specified in the application. But then, we, Sharri, I believe, for doing this.
Charri.
Charri, sorry, excuse me. Called up Aaron and mentioned to her that they could, we could extend the hour from the application and add additional operating hours, even though we don't actually plan on opening. Like, for example, she mentioned we should open, we should specify we're open on certain hours on Monday and Tuesday. Now, Situate Split Rock does not plan on opening on Mondays and Tuesdays, or many of those off hours, and the hours, I scheduled the hours that they plan on operating. And so we just want, I guess, sure, if you want clarification from the board as to the hours that are actually being permitted, because Aaron changed the hours that are permitted on the basis of Sharri's suggestion. And I just want to make sure that they don't have to open, for example, on Monday and Tuesdays, they have no plan to open on Monday and Tuesday, other than maybe on holidays, that's the option.
Yeah, right, so they...
Please.
Yeah, so the hours are that you're entitled.
Okay.
And it's completely up to the operator, if you want, and not, you know, requiring anything except...
That's right. Yeah, and that includes...
Some non-operating, oh, that is some fundraiser, some... Oh, okay, sure, we'll open up on Mondays, so all...
Right.
Okay. So, ready, ready to go.
Alright, so that's okay then.
I guess the rationale also is we were trying to be consistent with everyone who we grant licenses to, so that we weren't creating one business differently than another, and we were cognizant of that throughout the recent permits that we've got. We try to level stuff up.
Okay, so there's no, there's no expectation, even though it says they're open on Monday, because they're going to be open every Monday, not going to let them manage.
No, we're not, we just want to make sure we're being fair to every business.
Perfect, awesome.
But you don't have to take phone calls when people obviously...
Why aren't they open on Monday?
Don't throw them up here.
Understood, okay. Those are all the comments I have, so please feel free to ask any questions, Aaron and Ryan, or anybody else.
You ready? We'll go there, please.
Glad to hear about the question, because I was like, why are you opening it? It was like, you know, 12 on Monday, but I was like, I don't understand it, so now I know. I think the design, the layout is conceptualized is really thoughtful. So before I saw the designs, I'm like, oh, I love that, and all of those questions were answered, so good job on that one. I was going to ask Juro about sanitary, but you've already addressed that, so for that, great, I'll just check in. I guess my only question is, what are you targeting for an open date? And then I also who's the manager? I know it's in the backup, but it came up in my...
Yeah. That's me.
Okay, so you will be the manager of record?
Yeah.
And will you be on site?
Yes.
And oh, target open date?
Well, as soon as we can, but we, we know that we're, we've got to go through the process, so I believe we're going to tentatively go through a site plan review in April, late April. And then, you know, the ride that goes well. We'd like to get the container on-site as soon as possible after that and get going. We can have the container pretty much built out at Mini Warehousing in the interim, so we do plan on kind of getting all our jobs in a row. So that when we do have all of our town approvals, we can move as efficiently as possible. And, you know, in my mind, it's mid-July, maybe August, but, we'll see.
The other thing about the parking that you did note is, is directly across the street, is private, is it privately owned or not? So we had that problem with untold, with folks, you know, you're going to go to the closest lot that they can find. So I'm sure you're aware of that, but there's a little public parking on, you know, two other lots, so I just want to be mindful that we're not taking spots from the books that have businesses right there. What are your questions?
Well, this is coming to us, I think, in a little different order than it normally would. Because I was about to say, well, what about the planning board? We've never seen a, it's a proposal in my memory that looks like this. There are obvious reasons why it does look like this. And I'm sure that 90% of people in town would be happy to have what is a terrible eyesore converted into something that's attractive and nice, and that will bring life to the village that it needs more of. So I'm very happy about that. But we do have Anne Burbine from the planning board in the audience, so...
But we do have Anne Burdine from the planning board in the audience, so this needs to be approved by planning.
It does.
And all the, I mean, a container is a different sort of thing, so.
Different, yeah.
This would be first.
Yeah.
And so we want to make sure that all of the ducks are in a row. I believe I have no problem with it, but I'm just one person on the planning board.
Right, right.
This is me and this or other five other people. But I have suggested, I think a site plan review rather than a waiver is more important than going with the site plan. So that everything can be put in a row, neighbors are informed, people can come in, say what needs to be said, and we go from there. All right. And the recommendation, I think, was that Split Rock would come in and obtain the liquor license. We think I'd be able to, and I've seen you do it before. You can't do this on all of your permits. By all the various boards and races and pound it or. So we all know it. But it's normal in the case of these types of licenses that.
This is back into.
This is back backwards a little bit. I would turn another way, but I won't. No, I won't, I'm still. It's it's different.
It's different.
It's a very different concept. And like I said, I mean, we see it more and more that the temporary in or movable venues are, they're all over the place now. So this isn't like we're doing something completely different, but for us, it's different. And again, I think it's a real nice solution to what we all know is very problematic piece of property. Well, it's better to look at this, the needs.
Yes.
And the chain link fence, which was an improvement from what was there before. So yes, so we're making progress uncontrollably. The only other question I have is, and I know we do have Untold as, you know, in a neighborhood. We won't talk about harbor, that's only a figure animal, but I'm just concerned about the volume of the music. We have as a board gone from inside only entertainment to outside entertainment with no amplification. And now we're on the path of, we've granted licenses for amplified music outside. I just want to be sure that you will be sensitive to the fact that it is, it is a neighborhood there. I mean, there, you turn the corner and you're right up in one of my little. So I just want to say that I would hope that if your closing hour is nine thirty, for example, our paperwork's at ten thirty, I'd feel better about nine thirty, maybe ten thirty on a Friday and a Saturday. That was a different thing, but on a school night.
Yeah.
It's a little different. But I'm sure you want to be good neighbors and, like I said, I'm personally very happy to see something good happening down there. Because we're all waiting for the sewer to come and we've been waiting in the lead who's waiting. So this seems to be a nice, elegant interim solution. So that's all.
I think it's a very adaptable plan on what is a very difficult lot size. What do you do when it rains?
Well, so we've had that problem or challenge with Cohasset. We've got umbrellas at every table that are pretty, pretty big and we've got a big sale. I don't know if you've seen something similar, but the sale that kind of is over our communal fire pit area that's starting to break.
But people are getting a little more cozier.
Yeah, people get a little more cozy and, you know, if it's a trench or downpour, we have clothes. Like, it's just, it's an outdoor venue at the end of the day. But we were pretty lucky last season with the weather. I don't know, the summer was pretty, pretty perfect. So we're hoping for a repeat of that and not of our first season two years ago, which it rained like every Saturday and Sunday. But we still managed, you know, people still leave out. If it's drizzly, people find a way to come out. If it's a downpour, we close for the day.
But what is your staffing going to be like?
So we, we kind of have anywhere between like five or eight people that we have. And we've gotten really lucky with staff, almost all are local. Some, you know, part-time teachers, some college students back in town and some high school kids even. So that it kind of varies, but it ranges from about five to eight.
Will you be fully labor from your other operation to help us out?
Most likely.
I love what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
One of the reasons there's so close together is obviously synergies there, storage and buying and staffing, so.
Excellent. Well, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
And it looks very adaptably exciting, so a different flavor. There you go. Thank you.
I think this is awesome. I live the closest to North Citro on the board. I enjoy going to North Citro and I am looking forward to sewer and and bringing back the North Citro Village even more than it is currently. And I have enjoyed the new businesses and I see some of the faces of the businesses in the North Citro in the crowd who are very supportive as well. So I thank you for this because I'm tired of walking by an empty lot. I appreciate, I appreciate the creativity with a really difficult situation for the next couple of years. Because we're probably, we're a couple of years out on the sewer with the amount of permitting we have to go through with the state. Maybe we can get the state to help us on that at some point. My only, the board asked three questions. My only question, remaining question, that's a very important one. Will you be serving Situate oysters?
I mean, oh, God, this is a loaded question. Yeah, I, you know, we're going to have to, we probably will, I imagine. Yeah, we have to. That's a directive from the board.
I just think.
We're going to open it and we're not.
A suggestion. Yes, we have three, we have three aquaculture farmers in Situate harvesting, and they harvested last year and are continuing to harvest, so.
We'd love to chat with them.
Yes, you should chat with them, so. And thank you.
Actually, I want, a lot of the questions were asked. I have a few, but actually, my biggest questions, there's questions or concerns, residents or neighbors or business owners.
If you want to, you can embed it to your record.
Yes, sure.
If I could read this, this is directed to our assistant, High Cherry Home Hall as well. My family and I live at three twenty Gannett Road in Situate. But I'm reaching out to express my support for the Split Rock Beer Garden project as being considered in North Citro. We believe this development would provide some much needed energy in North Citro. It would add a lot of value to the local community. As a neighbor of the project, we believe downtown North Citro would greatly benefit from having a social gathering space, both for the surrounding community and your businesses. This appears to be, there appears to be ample parking and infrastructure in place to support the project. While I can't make it to the meeting, please consider my vote in favor of the liquor license and project progression. This is from Evan Deutsch, who's a resident at three twenty Gannett.
Can I give my speech before you ask? Sure. So I am familiar with your operations and you have a good record and I, we all made sure that we make this speech right. When serving alcohol, the responsibility is a key difference. And I know that, you know, backup shows that you've got the experience and training, that's why I asked about the manager. And, you know, the venue, I know, you know, my adult children spend a lot of time in glasses, so I'm glad they're going to write the bike stones to drive across the border. So I just want to make sure that, you know, our whole board wants to emphasize that we take it very seriously. And, you know, it is a new venue, it's a new kind of idea. So it'll, you know, it'll be the. Okay, Steve, over.
Anyone in the audience? Or against, even though anyone? Oh, yes.
Anne Burdine from Channing Bridge Road. I have had a business in North Citro in the thirty five years since we first opened. I've seen a lot of things come and a lot of things go. And I can tell you that please don't know that this is coming. I really think, and I'm not speaking as a planning member, but as a resident of and business owner in North Citro. And thank you for your creativity and thank you for bringing this to us. You know, as far as I'm concerned, when sewer comes, hell of a breeze over, but.
Seven hundred and nine days, seven hundred and nine days.
Yeah, right, like I said. But this is, as far as parking is concerned, the work, I lived through the train, I lived through the detours, I lived through all of that. And my business did not suffer. And the only, and I have two parking spaces out front. The only time it suffered is when you all decided not to flood North Citro. So that said, if people want whatever we have, whether it is brewed right here, that these people are phenomenal, and that they brought so much to that edge of country way. People want you to come, they'll show up, and they have. And that's why I'm still there after thirty five years.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's my true sense. Rub it on.
So, and I'll just say, and I hope, I hope some of the, I don't mind some of those problems of traffic and parking. That's the problem when I'm, when we're up here, I want to have. I want too many people that want to move to North Citro. They spill over and they work one, four, three, they go get, you know, they're going to serve or go to town. I want the spill over, I want it to be too popular that. That's a background, I don't want to go to town, so. And the only other thing, looks like things you don't want, where just think, we always love when new businesses come to town. Thank you, it's wonderful, but we have so many great local organizations that love to partner up. You know, just invite you to do that, but it's only different local nonprofits that really want to get involved, so. You don't have to, just as a neighbor and a person, like, please, please embrace the community and it'll definitely embrace you. And it'll be fabulous, so we're going to turn North Citro around, maybe even better than this. So with that, I'd love some motion.
Are we doing emotions in here based on all the files? They're correct, Sharon?
Yes.
I can do it.
Depending, we're a little in the board and all that, most people just.
Pending, pending, you see proof?
Yeah.
And we should add, and all local permits. And all local permits is that.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
You can go on then.
And all local.
Okay, let me give it a whirl. Move to approve a new seasonal general on premise, section twelve, all alcohol beverage, beverages licensed for Situate Split Rock Social Incorporated, doing business as Situate Split Rock, located at three sixty Gannett Road, Situate, Mass. The total square footage of outdoor space is five thousand four hundred square foot. Hours of operations for alcohol sales outside are Sundays and Mondays, twelve P M. to seven thirty P M. Thursday through Thursday, four P M. to ten thirty P M. And Friday through Saturday, twelve P M. to ten thirty P M. pending A B C C approval. Also, move to approve a new common vehicular license for Situate Split Rock Social Incorporated, doing business as Situate Split Rock for Sundays and Mondays, twelve P M. to seven thirty P M. Tuesdays through Thursdays, four P M. to ten thirty P M. And Friday through Saturday, twelve P M. to ten thirty P M. Pending all final approvals and inspections with the board of health and building. Move to approve a new annual entertainment license for Situate Split Rock Social Incorporated, doing business as Situate Split Rock Outdoors, live or recorded music DJ with the use of amplification, two to three piece live band with amplified singers and or musicians, Sunday through Monday, twelve P M. to seven P M. Tuesday through Thursday, four P M. to nine P M. And Friday through Saturday, twelve P M. to ten P M. And of course, all of that is pending other, all board approvals, including planning board. Second.
We've been observing, but just can't feel all those in favor.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Andrew, come on. Just wait, all right, now we can hear. All right, this is, again, we go from more good news to more goodness.
Yes.
Well, this is fabulous. How was everyone tonight? Wow, how are you?
Very well.
So we are now talking public health excellence grant?
Yes.
I think we still agree on that.
So this, as you've heard me speak before during the budget sessions, this is the Public Health Excellence Grant that Situate is part of with Hingham and Cohasset. Cohasset is the host agency. When we entered into the Public Health Excellence Grant, the grant came about of an assessment that was made statewide in two thousand nineteen about efficiencies across all public health agencies. So they created this grant to have shared services where a lot of towns, there's three hundred and sixty one, three hundred and sixty one boards of health. And many, many towns are just like Situate, small towns, two, three people. So when they did the study in two thousand nineteen, they realized that there are a lot of services out there that are required that towns can use to share, so that's how this became. When Cohasset applied for it, they needed partners. Hingham and Situate said we would do it. To join at that point, we only needed a memorandum of understanding with Hingham, Cohasset and Situate, and that only had to be signed by the town manager from each town. That has happened. We are now wanting the next process where the state is going to be giving us, it's close to four hundred thousand dollars a year for the next ten years. Because it's going to be going for that long, they wanted a little bit more formal agreement. So this we drafted by DPH attorneys. Attorneys for all three towns have already reviewed it, seen the final copy and have approved the final copy. That's why right now we're in the process of going to each one of the towns. It basically spells out what we've been doing all along as far as, we meet once a week now anyway. And it's usually the three health directors and the Erica Soros, who's a licensed clinical social worker, along with the other three employees that we hired at work throughout all three towns. So we meet on a regular basis anyway. We vote on everything. This just makes it a much more formal agreement. The state wants us to have it, and that's why I'm here before you. We went before the board of health last night for approval. They approved it unanimously and the board of health has to appoint an alternate. the Board of Health has to appoint an alternate. In case I can't make any meetings, I'm an automatic by position, they appoint the alternate. They appointed, um, Erica Soros. She's the natural, she's working with the grant on regular days, so that was approved last night too. And I'm here to answer any questions.
I mean, I'm more, Mr. Friday, this hasn't been done sooner, twenty years ago.
Oh, oh, I know.
No, no, I know, you know, I, it's, everything spelled out is an expert. Sharing resources, talking about doing training together, regionalizing some of these things, sharing the knowledge, I mean, it's not like, yeah. So we, we. Beesels in acid, it's not gonna come.
We hired a public health officer for all three towns. A tobacco control officer that does all three towns. An additional licensed clinical social worker that works in all three towns. So it's, it's a no grant. Especially when the services don't require a whole lot, I mean, the tobacco control, it's more time consuming to get out there, inspect everyone, license them, and do things. It's a great idea. Fabulous.
I'm all for collaboration on our neighboring towns.
Yes.
One in particular. Just thought I'd put it out there first.
Yeah.
Just, it's a brilliant idea, and we should support every member.
Completely agree, and thank you for drafting this, we're good.
Yeah, that's really good, it's gonna help. It kinda helps a lot. Thank you, Margaret.
Move to approve the intermunicipal agreement, I may, to establish office of South Shore Public Health Coalition. Second.
I miss Campbell, sir, my name is Conley, all those in favor are ayes. It's unanimous.
The only signature that is required is the chairperson. Um, and I'll move it with Nancy and you can take care of it at the end of the bigger. Karen, I agree, it's not, okay, because Karen has to come down, fly away. Oh, you'll get a call.
All right.
You should have the newspaper here. The big pictures.
We have no big.
Breaking news.
W E T, maybe you can do something.
Breaking news of the town.
W E X, fifteen ten on the A I D guy, I listen to N E X regularly. All right, thank you all. Have a good day, thanks, have a good day. All right, Dan.
Good evening.
Our things, let's talk about Bates House.
Yes, so, um, as, as we noted in the presentation I made last week, uh, we had not voted officially on the funds for the Bates House. Uh, so we did have our monthly meeting last night and did vote on that. And just to summarize that, what we had agreed to for the town meeting was to recommend sixty-nine thousand dollars for the architectural contract for the final design bidding and construction management, uh, for the repairs to the Bates House. And then four hundred thousand dollars with a contingency of twenty percent, so another eighty thousand dollars to total four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, this is split up between the sixty-nine thousand dollars going to the special town meeting and the four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the annual town meeting. And that's to free up funds, uh, basically to get the project, uh, moving along, excuse me. And just to summarize what the intent of the funds are for, it's to repair the foundation, uh, there are framing issues at the house, uh, repairing pointing, flooring replacement in the kitchen, and making the access to the house A D A compliant. So the total was five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, split up between the special town meeting and the annual town meeting. And that was unanimously approved last night by the committee.
Thank you. Now we'll open up your questions first. And I'm fine, I understand what you're doing.
So, I have, I have such a concern. Um, I don't think you can hear me, I know it's hard from this side of the room. Um, it's a lot, I mean, it's an historic asset, it's one of the, it's one of the gems, it's one of the best, it's probably the best stor- historical story in town. Um, and so the, the need to preserve that building is, is, is appropriate. What I'm concerned about is this is a an awfully large amount of money, and my concerns about the use of it for this building is it is public funds being used, preserving historic buildings that is for all intents and purposes being used as private residences. Um, it's only open, as I understand it, a couple of times a year. And, um, I really am concerned that, yes, we want to preserve it, that I, I think that the use of that building, um, if we're investing this kind of money, this public money, it should have public access. Um, the other thing that concerns me about the number is conversation we've had over the years on many projects is we, you know, the flaw in our, in our applications right now is that, and this is no, no way of criticism of C P C, is you're reactive to what comes before you rather than planning how we want to spend the dollars that are received from C P C. And I think it's bigger than this project, but this is because it's a very large, um, investment in a single building that this board needs to spend some time, maybe not today, but in the future, having a real conversation about should we be a little more thoughtful rather than just reactive to what the community needs, saying, you know, we're gonna be talking later tonight about a four lot housing at the gate reuse, or gate reuse. That's a very expensive project. If we are not thoughtful about the uses of these funds, we could be in a situation where we say, oh geez, I wish we hadn't done all these little projects, we could go on to the big one. This, because of the size of this one, made me sit up and think about that. In this particular one, I, I'm very torn because I, you know, we don't want that building to fall down. We, we want to preserve the street, the town bought it for that purpose. Um, but I have a real hard time spending that money and keeping it basically as a, as a private, a subsidized private residence. So that's my two cents on that, I love David, I love what he says.
Let's do it. I mean, you're actually, I was gonna ask, you answered something, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Um, well, first of all, it is occupied by a private person. It is not a private residence. It is owned by the town. Correct, so that is incorrect to call it a public, a private residence. Um, we have a number of other historic properties in town that you get rented out, including the man farmhouse, including the, uh, the lighthouse keeper's cottage. Um, and I think that one of the one of the challenges of buying historic properties is how you maintain them properly and how, what standards do you use? Because in fact, if you look at the federal guidelines for historic properties, they include whether you're simply trying to preserve something, whether you're trying to restore something. And if, at this point, it seems to me as though we're doing our best to preserve, um, properties, and this will come up when we have more Kai Lincoln. Um, and we're gonna spend money on the, the cottage that's over there for caretaker, whatever you want to call him or her. Um, and we're gonna spend public money on that, but it's for the protection of the property. So I'm, I understand how people feel about the amount of money that it costs, especially as it relates to historic properties, but there are simply problems with the age of historic properties, your condition, you know, what has been done to them over the years, or actually not done for many years. So, you know, I, I agree with you, it is a lot of money, but, um, I don't know exactly how this came to us, I don't know whether historical society. But it might also, so it couldn't have been the, Nancy, was it the facilities?
It was our report, yeah, we commissioned a, um, a facility study with the same company, did there are other twenty-five buildings in town? After we purchased the mortar hut property, and we did the Bates at the same time because we had taken ownership of it, the light tenant passed away in between.
Right, right.
And it was from that study that, um, structural concerns of the building were raised.
Right, so I'm assuming, and I can't, I have to be honest with you, I didn't read that before, so, um, I'm assuming they found enough structural issues
Oh, yes.
that made them realize that, you know, things would fall apart.
Yes.
And then we're in serious trouble.
It was, it was the second structural engineer was reported out of that one.
Yes. So, and I, I think that that could extend to a private person, is, is a good thing. Um, we can have it open three sixty-five days a year, and it's nice to have someone in there who knows if there are birds coming down the chimney, or if there are mice in the walls, or, gee, in the case of the, um, the cupboard barn, I think it was, we had an infestation of raccoons. And so I, I think, and I think the, the role of the facilities to heart, and frankly, is to detect and discover those issues that need attention. And so I think when we have experts look at something like the Bates House, then, then we need to listen, and I don't think that they would tell us, I don't think this work. Uh, you know, maybe it's possible that we could spread it out a little bit, but it seems it's a small property, so. Um, so I understand a concern about the way things come to C P C, but that's the way it's operated.
That's different.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we try to get our hands around it, but the fact is that things come to us, or C P C, and they work very hard on evaluating all these, you know, different situations, and they're certainly not interested in spending, um, money that's not necessary. And, and I will say that, having, having been to many of their meetings over the years, they spend a lot of time weighing the pros and the cons of, of all of these things, so, um, it's that's the way I would, I absolutely have, no, it's not a reflection on their diligence.
No, but I think it's all of the piece that this is where we are with this.
It's, they.
Could we just, um, remind everybody that this is one of the landmarks of our town? The War of eighteen twelve, Bates children that fought off the British by unique creative method? And here we are just trying to preserve this and continue that legacy to have the identity that the town lives by. The former lighthouse keeper's house. So it's all intertwined, and I do appreciate the fact that, yes, somebody has to live there to keep it, at least as new order as possible. But we really are investing in our legacy and our history for this town, it's part of our identity, that's all I'll say. I think it's a good.
Totally agree, I think the, the one point, because I would like to, sorry. I do think access is very global, like you say, because even the lighthouse, if you come up where everyone's walking around, that person, and where I had Lincoln Avenue, there's gonna be a trail that's there. I've lived in this town, I've never been, I've never set foot in that, I don't know if you have, anyone's ever, and that's my fault. I'm just saying, we just want to make sure if we do a, a reason not to, I'm gonna support this. I'm just saying, access is, right. So I just, I think having access is to make sure that we can, people can actually see something.
Well, I thought we had to interrupt that, I've actually been inside that house only because it was one of the days when the historical society opens up all the various properties that they own. Um, so you, you can go inside, and it's, it's, some, it is restricted, there's no question, but I mean, I don't know if you've been into the man barn house either, now that's quite a trip. Um, so, uh, it, it, some of these properties are only open several days of the year, but they are open.
Just love to see them, that's all.
I agree, I would also say, I think maybe this is an opportunity, I mean, I agree, it needs to be fixed, there's some serious structural problems, and it's a history of our town. But it may, it's also maybe an opportunity to figure out how to get folks in there for, for more of a story. And I've been to a lot of the other properties because I went on the third grade field trip, and they didn't go to this one. So, I, I've been to the other offices because I was the shepherd on the third grade field trip. So maybe it's an opportunity, um, when we're, that whether it's the lighthouse or whatever is getting renovated, and maybe more Kai Lincoln in the future, that it's also wrapped into the curriculum of the kids going in school, because that's also another point where that's a lot of people that go through.
Yeah.
And it is the best story.
It is the best story, I, I don't know why they, maybe the third grade needs to have another spot?
I, I'd like to make a pitch. I'm not a member of the historical society, but one of the problems they do have is when they're open, they have open houses or historical, it's very hard for them to get people to staff things.
Yes.
So to the extent that we've got people in town who would like to be a part of helping the historical society, you don't have to make a donation, you don't have to, you know, give your eighteen, twenty-five house to them, but they, they need people. Um, and like a lot of our organizations, that they need more and more people and more younger people, so I would think, just like to suggest that people maybe step up and help these staffs, some of these places that are in there, open.
All right, Dan, Article twelve. The, I think this is at the flagpole?
No, it's the Bates, it's the Bates House again, it's in Baltimore.
Yeah, what is the A S T M, S T M, what is the A T M?
Yeah, the S T M is the, that's on the side, for sixty-nine thousand, not the A T M, it's the.
Did we vote on the flagpole, or not?
You can vote on any, any of it.
Oh, none of them, okay. All right, um. All right, let's, so now we have to go through all these. And then this is for recommendation or not to recommend? Article twelve, sorry, I just lost my page.
Wait, didn't we vote on some of them? We voted everything but Bates House.
And I, and I, that's.
Okay, so the zoning law.
I thought we voted on the flagpole.
Yeah.
We just had questions, we voted on it.
I didn't think they.
I don't know, I wasn't there, I was there.
Yeah, I, I thought you put, put the whole article over, both the C P C articles and the zoning law article. It's a nice meeting, I have it marked, it's three thirteen agenda.
Yeah, I think that is, we talked, discussed it all, and we had, and C P C had not, yeah. We had voted on the paint, so that, that must have.
I think we're gonna, they, the, the, is it just waiting?
No, the C P C, you were waiting for Bates, from C P C, for voting on it. So, what, Nancy, are you saying that we need to vote the entire C P C article completely, both of them?
The twelve and thirteen.
Both, both the special.
Or three.
Both the special.
Three.
Twelve.
Special town.
We're waiting around here.
Certainly, and.
Right, the special town meeting only had the Bates House for sixty-nine thousand, it was approved on on Monday by the C P C, and then the adjustment of fifteen hundred dollars for, um, set aside.
So we're gonna do that, though. So, so we need, now you're at, Karen, you, you have one question?
I do. Uh, so I'm just finding the list again. Um, I, we, I, I was contemplating the list, um, and I have to say that when I reflected on the proposal to spend three thousand dollars on the Cedar Point Flagpole, um, we asked the questions about who's gonna maintain it, what is, you know, all of that, and the association said that they would, you know, take that responsibility, and I have to say, I have it gave me pause as I reflected on it, that this is a, you know, we have a, we have a lot of flagpoles, and there are a lot of rules you have to follow, and we are potentially setting up a situation where it's on our land, it's our flagpole, and, and we are not in control of its, its proper, um, estoniness, you know, putting the flag up, or do all that stuff. And it's, um, you know, and they said they'll take it down in the winter, and I'm not sure that we're supposed to be doing that, and I get it. And the more I thought about it, I thought that I, I just don't support spending money on putting a flagpole there. So I just wanted to flag that, that was really my intention, I was.
You mean, like, you know, we asked the question, and then we got an email?
We did.
Who sent us the email?
Jim did.
Jim did, okay.
Jim, Jim talked to David Ball. And I believe the solution that they came up with, which you apparently don't care for, um, was that it would be lit during non-winter hours, so that you wouldn't have a problem with raising it low, right? As long as it's lit.
As long as it's lit, it, it's fine. But then it would be taken down during the winter hours. And I don't know why we can't not have flag, flagpole, just, I don't think there's any rule about that. Um, so, and frankly, wintertime down there would be wear and tear of deep time, so.
Well, if you have any kind of weather, you can, you're supposed to take your flag down.
Apparently, well, apparently, if it is lit, that is not the case.
In climate, what, we spoke to.
Well, then, you know, I, and.
That's winter situation.
Yeah, it's a bad space, it's a way from on.
That's sort of my point, it's public property, a public flagpole, but then the public is not, technically, the town is not responsible. I see.
Jim, do you have, you wanna jump in, or?
So, the, the email you're looking for is actually sent by Dan?
Oh.
We talked to Dave on February twenty-sixth. Um, spoken with Dan Henning, who's directly across the street from the flagpole. He and I agree the way to address the flight lighting issue is for the Cedar Point Association to purchase and install a solar light for the flagpole. It's possible they might not fly the flag in the depths of winter because of the harsh weather. So, that was the email that David lighted, the flag code, we fly it from dusk to dawn unless the flag is properly illuminated. Uh, we do take down some flags in the wintertime, you might have noticed that the stadium flag over at the high school's been taken down because leaving that up all winter just ends up damaging the flagpole, uh, so we do take that down, but um. Cedar Point would be responsible for putting it up and down and lighting it, if it's not correctly lit, then it's supposed to come down at night.
And in the interim, we're gonna look into that new automated uh flag raising wireless, do you know? And it's all wireless, it will go up and down by itself. We'll look into that technology in future years.
AI.
So, let's, let me try to, so. We're, I think we're all in agreement of every article, with the exception of the flag. So, can I get a motion to, to recommend all CPC articles? And we'll pull out.
I'll make a.
Flagpole one.
Make a motion to support Article twelve as um recommended by the CPC committee, CPC um for all articles one through eight, excluding nine, which is for the stuff on like, but.
All right, move, so we're supporting all the articles, and then we'll take a separate vote on the flagpole.
Works for me.
Perfect.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, uh, seconded by Ms. Harrison, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, now let's recommend, I think it must have recommended.
Was that Article nine?
Yeah, I would, I would not recommend Article twelve, number nine, three thousand dollars for Cedar Point Flagpole. Two seconds.
There's no seconds, so I need a motion to recommend it.
Move to recommend CPC uh purchase of the Cedar Point. Uh, flagpole. Wouldn't it provide so that we pay attention to the etiquette of flying the flag properly?
Move, uh, Ms. Conley, Mr. Gilmore, all those in favor?
Aye.
And, and one, so four to one. Thank you, Dan, we, we are all good.
Did we do, no.
We need to do Article three.
Article three.
Oh, right, right.
True.
Move to recommend Article three of April fourteen, twenty twenty-five, special town meeting.
Second.
For the administration purposes.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Now, perfect, now we're good, all right.
An hour of ADUs.
Can't, well, Karen, don't kill me, I'd like to take a resource real quick, this is, this is gonna be.
We left another meeting to come here. All right.
This is gonna be, this is, I promise you. Come on up, we're gonna, we're gonna work that resource.
Now, we're gonna change, I just wanna point that out.
It's gonna be, this is a good deal. I probably. We're going, we're just moving one ahead, two, one oh two. There's no action for us.
There's no action whatsoever, we just wanna present it, because we want it.
Yeah.
Um, the gas company approached me, we just finished the water line on America Road, and they wanted to replace another section of the gas line. Um, at that time, I was not that interested in having it replaced, we discussed it. And in the end, the gas company is willing to um help us with the paving and grant us um our, I don't wanna say the town name, let's say official word.
Restitution.
Rest, restitution for repaving a sum of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to help us out. If you want that, I wanna bring it before the board, if anybody has any questions, I'm gonna let them start immediately, so when the breaks, and try to get them out of there as soon as possible, um, and we'll be watching for that, and then we'll be paving probably next spring our um lake vault, they will be, be doing patchwork as they go, so I wanna bring it before the board and end up the questions. Um, Brian Gellis, Pat is the overall, um, what's your, uh, special title supervisor or overall supervisor of the gas company? You'll be working on this. Yes.
Is next spring, this spring, or the next spring, twenty-sixth or twenty-five?
Well, this is this spring, next spring would be the following year, depending on how the settlement goes.
Would be the repaving?
Repaving.
Okay, so the date is coming up this spring?
So, we're expecting them probably to be about two and a half months. Does that sound about reasonable? Two and a half months to three months to do the work, if they start April, May, June. No offense, guys, it is the gas company, July, August, I mean, hopefully where it would be done sooner, but.
Right. Right there.
Yeah, just one more thing, not to be scold, but the last time the gas company was in, they were gonna do Van Minel, they were gonna do Deportant Stetson, we had back and forth and back and forth, they were gonna do Jericho Road, they got certain point Jericho, and then they didn't. Is this for real?
That's correct.
Or is this yet another?
Nope, this is for real.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna just like disappear?
Nope, we, I was here last time, we came before the board, um, to meet about those projects. At that time, we were committed to do that section of Jericho, those other projects, you know, were essentially funded by, you know, different bucket of money that the company has to improve, improve reliability and whatnot.
I'll promise you, this was not his decision, correct?
No, I'm, I'm.
Like, I feel that like every day.
He's here from the gas.
Yeah, no, I know.
Sometimes, sorry, that it's a bit, he, we're defending here, um, I'm just saying that the last time, and there was a, a great deal of, uh, you know, haste on Cornet Stetson.
Yep.
About what might or might not happen, and so, but this is just for one thing, it's for Jericho Road.
Correct, we're, we're committed to do this, you know, town's paving the road, like the gas main's nineteen twenty-nine, and nearly a hundred years old, has Luke history, you know, probably average, you know, anywhere from two to three, four weeks per year, you know, this section, so. If we don't take this opportunity to replace the gas main, GTW goes and pays the road, it's, it's not good for us, it's not good for the town, we're taking out the new road, and eventually we would become an intercourse meeting, so, it's a win-win.
Well.
Kevin lets us in, you know, we're making a contribution, about a hundred and forty-two thousand.
I, I just wanna say though, that, you know, I understand, and in fact, the reason why the board tends to vote in favor of these types of things, none of us wanna be responsible for there being some explosion because a gas main has not been, or is in need of repair, so I, I get it, but I'm just kinda holding you, please, be quiet today.
We can.
Just on my behalf.
I work with Kevin, we could be out there in two weeks, to be honest.
Uh, the only question I have is in, you're responsible for these details, none of that?
That's correct.
Yeah. Because um, you're not going to go into July, but if you had, you know, we, we're in the high season, this, you know, we got a lot of people coming through now.
As soon as we start, you know, as soon as things start, like really, we want to be out there within two weeks, to just have the dictates, the markups and whatnot. Yeah, you're true.
Got a question on the restitution, how do we get to a hundred and forty-one, nine, eighty-two, twenty-three? How do we get to that number?
So, we did, oh, I'm sorry.
And I was gonna say, what does it actually cost? Is that a fraction of what it's gonna cost?
It's about fifty percent. We had an estimate of what we did for the water line, and I had had numbers of two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, so we came up with the agreement that it would be split down the middle, because if he came and didn't work, I would make him repave the road edge to edge, and we'd be arguing about that, so we came up with the notion that we could each save some money doing it ahead of time, and it would be beneficial for the town, we can fifty percent.
Okay, thank you, and then what if, this is a year, when are we paving this, in?
Well, we have to, we have to give it time to settle.
What, so like twenty twenty-six?
Spring, spring.
Certainly, spring, it might be the end of the fall, we'll, we'll see how it looks.
What happens if it's substantially more cost? And you, as we're estimating something in a year.
Well.
What if it's like?
I did have.
Double the cost based on not getting materials, based on who knows what the economy can be, tariffs, I, you name it, like, what if it's cost twice as much when we're getting ready to pave the, and they've only really contributed a smaller than, oh, no, twenty-five percent.
So, right now, I've got two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars allocated to pave that, so we came up with the agreement, they're not why curious, they're not doing the entire road, I, we might, you know, it's, it's a little bigger, they're paying half the cost to do the entire road. Technically, if we get down to the nitty-gritty, they could say, well, we're doing sixty percent of the road, not the entire road, we should probably pay you um, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and I figured fifty percent would cover any of those additional costs or anything else that we have involved in that, as well as police detail for escalations.
Okay, so it's not true, okay, I was just curious, I mean, is there any, I guess, I, what do we get, what happens a year from now? It's a lot more money to get.
We negotiated it, and, and, you know, we did, at this point, this is the best we could do, it's good for them, it's good for us. And if it is more.
Cross our fingers.
If it is more, you know, next time I'll get some more money out of Brian, that's all.
Okay.
Well, thank you for writing.
Yeah, that was good, you're easy.
Thanks, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Karen, go, sorry, Karen, I just.
Now, that's.
I thought this one, I know, I know, I'm sorry. I just had a feeling this one's gonna go.
I think this is, I'm a volunteer.
A volunteer, thank you for your service.
We have copies.
We have a volunteer.
Copy.
My, my, I heard you had burdens, we have burdens, I'm just saying.
Let's call one, what was it? Call C, let's call it.
All right, so accessory dwelling units, so when we were here last week, um, we, one cha- one change was requested to the bylaw, we had made that change. We sat in a seminar this afternoon from MAPC having a model ADU bylaw.
Not so much, don't get too excited.
Yeah, don't get too excited, uh, so, I, based on that, I, we found one small change that we have to make. Um, town council has been in touch with the AG's office, only to the extent that um they have acknowledged town council's email, no, no more feedback from, from the AG's office yet. So, I think that basically the bylaw, as you had it last week, with the, with the one change, and.
Figure that a little.
Yes, I took that out, I took that out, and I have to make one change to one definition, um, and whatever else um comes this week from, from the AG's office. I mean, that, it was, it was very clear from the um webinar today that the town absolutely has the choice to whether or not to do short-term rentals, and the planning board has said ADUs will not be used for short-term rentals, because the whole idea of the Ford of the Homes Act was for permanent house payment.
All right, open up again, questions, comments?
No, just again, great work, I'm.
Thank you.
Danny, I appreciate the consideration of changing that definition of vagueness in the definition of a kitchen, I do appreciate that greatly. I understand, the more I think about the short-term aspect of things, I will just make comment that it's interesting that the primary house can be short-term, but the ADU can't, and I always like things to be equal, centers Paris. However, you had my vote, and let's move this thing forward, I do appreciate your dedication and time, and I know how difficult this has been.
It has been very difficult.
Yeah, so, I'm with you.
I'm with you.
Let's move forward.
Well, that's what we're on primary.
There you go.
I have nothing, thank you, besides thank you for all of your work on this.
Questions, uh, oh boy, so yeah, I misjudged how long this was gonna take.
That's right.
I got that one wrong, big time.
That's okay, that's okay. All you.
Thank you.
All right.
Sure, a lot of motion? Move to recommend Article sixteen of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, annual town meeting, for amendments to the zoning bylaws relevant to accessory dwelling units.
Second.
No more second, Ms. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Hold up, man, we got some pizza. You have killed it? No, well, I'm hungry. All right.
Shoulders.
Now, this is, um, got a previous.
On our tree, on our tree. We're on, we're on track, man, right? Tendents, we're okay.
Page one of the right.
Right.
We, we picked that goal out.
Yeah.
The like, security. There you go. All right. How are things going up there? We love this weather, we don't have to heat the concrete anymore, at least I.
I, I stood behind, I stood behind the concrete, it struck today, and I'm like, what was that?
All right, still a little, thank you for that, uh, so yeah, take us through, thank you.
Excellent, well, no, thanks again, I can't believe it's been five months since we met, or four. I'm so excited to give an update here, so if you wanna advance just the next page. Uh, yeah, so typical to last time, I wanna, this time we'll give a project status update, where we are with, um, you know, construction progress. Put in a lot of photos this time, we have a lot of construction going on up there, so good things to share. Um, highlight again, like the ongoing project coordination, just give updates of, you know, how we've seen that be successful, and then comments or questions, so we'll open it up. Right, um, so for project semittals, or project status, um, you know, just hitting the high points here, so we're still in the semittal phase, we're about seventy-five percent through the semittals, and that's just, um, yeah, over three hundred and sixty semitals reviewed, so the. But it doesn't include uh pre-semittals, but I wanted to highlight here, like, to minimize the amount of back-horford of the contractors, we have been, uh, you know, coordinating calls, so we can get ahead of any comments, and hopefully reduce the, that actual pre-semittal. So, we have seen that be successful, and staying on top of like prompt review of the request for information. Blue and Cass out there, so just, you know, once they come in, review it, get a response, um, get it back out to the contractor. So, I did mention this last time, but we are still using the Procore um format, so that's how all of these semittals and RPIs are being processed. Uh, still on schedule, so as, you know, as listed here, similar things that we presented um last time, do you wanna highlight, yes, with the cold weather and concrete work, really wanna commend the contractor, they've been putting in the heaters, um, making sure the space is warm enough to fix up the concrete, and once the concrete's in, and on the blankets, um, so they've been staying on top of that and staying right on schedule, you know, when, anytime there's been snow, taking care of the site, removing it, so we've been very, um, you know, pleased with seeing how, even with the cold temperatures, they've been staying on that. Andrew, as you mentioned, yes, we're starting to see warm weather, so I think that will just continue, you know, to keep the progress, uh, progress going. Uh, I also want to note, like, in relation to the schedule, and then also, um, yeah, the next line, we have a change order request that's uh ready for approval. Uh, we are just over eighteen percent by payment on the project, and just shy of twenty percent um by time, so we are seeing, like, we're right in line with payment in time. The, you know, change order request that we have in front of us is less than point oh one percent of the contract value. So, we feel at this stage of the game, you know, it does include some cost items in the credit, we feel comfortable, we, you know, don't have any concerns. Uh, and what we're looking at is cost science, really is, you know, to enhance the project and add value out there.
All right, eight hundred and nineteen days. Eight hundred and nineteen days.
Yes, you know, I did, uh, have the leads on here for you, sort of, yeah, two fifteen, I think we're through, and I'll leave with the days like that.
What specifically is the change order?
So there's a, a few different items that we're looking at.
And is it, this is above the total?
This is above, yes.
Okay, yep, so what?
Yes, yeah, so we are looking at, um, the, so overhead doors, we are expanding the size of the doors. So that did include a change of, um, you know, larger doors out there, uh, but it does allow for moving in bigger, you know. Equipment moving in and out, so it just makes it much easier, they can utilize the doors for that. Um, in the lab area, so they're, they're going to be processing a lot of, uh, you know, with. The, the measuring and the, the sampling that they have to take place, um, included a, a pretty substantial, like, dishwasher out there that would allow them to, you know. Process, you know, cleaning of those materials, you know, really reduce the effort on staff, um, swing gates and other items, there are a few. So, I guess, yes.
Why wasn't this conceived of in the beginning when we designed? I guess this project has been, started out this cost, then it was up here, yes. If every time we meet, we've got another. By granted, it's like seven thousand dollars, compared to the project, it's very small, but like, I don't want every time we meet, it costs a little bit more, or a little bit more, or a little bit more. And what I'm hearing is not, well, this might cost more, cause like, whatever, I'm hearing. We decided to get better doors, or we decided to get a better, um, dishwasher, or we decided to get a better this, and like. We, like, when we had that first cost change, like, we were seriously looking into the project, that like, what can we cut? To not have the total, so I don't know why we're going back asking for more money. Like, like, to me, it doesn't make sense.
I, I want to take a stab at this a little bit, I can. As this project was coming to completion design and getting ready to go to bid. One of the things that we were facing was the fact that there was what's known as Buy American, Build American provision. And if we bid it. Before date certain, we did not have to comply with that. And our estimates, we'd add twenty percent to the project cost, we had to comply with Buy American, Build American. So. As we went to bid, we knew some items that were not yet complete, things like the controllers for a couple of gates. Um, the dishwasher had, had been done, uh, sub pump inside the elevator pit. Most of these are some electrical items, because the electrical was the component, that we had all the big stuff in there, but we didn't have all the last group of wires done. Okay, so, by and large, what we're seeing here is what I refer to as battle. Costs, you know, costs that we incurred, because rather than hold the project for another three months before we bid it. Which would have put us over the battle threshold, that's where we're at with some of this.
And then, and, uh, I'm sorry.
I just wonder how much more of this exists? Cause we're like, we're on concrete, there's gotta ways to go, how much more? How many more of these things do you anticipate could fluctuate with the cost?
Well, for every building we've done, we, I mean, that's what the contingency is for, and some, cause something you can't know, right?
I know, I just, this one's a little bit more sensitive, cause we often like go back and ask for more, more money, a lot more money.
Is to reinforce the directive that we don't want nice staffs.
We don't.
At this point, it's, you know, we've bid and, and gone back to the, to the community twice funded, so I think that's the, my good, since making is. We, we understand that there's going to be, there's gonna be things.
And, and we're watching, I like our, our cap, we're, we're very strict on that. Some of the things with the doors, it might have been, you know, put out, the doors were spec'd at a certain size. And then when they get in there, they realize some of the equipment, if it ever had to be replaced, it wouldn't fit out the door. So they had to widen the door by, say, six inches. It's, it's not, uh, we just thought it'd be great to have sixteen-foot doors instead of twelve-foot doors. It's for the equipment and, and that type of stuff, so it's more for access to the building and some of those stuff. Because when you see the scope of the plans and you see the size of the specifications as well as the variance. They're huge, you can't see everything, they're gonna run into problems, um, and that's what the contingency started, I think.
I, I know they will, I just really want to make sure it's not, we want, we decided we want a nicer dishwasher.
No, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing to that effect, the dishwasher came up.
We wanted a better couch, we needed a better fridge, none of that, it's supposed to be like.
And the dishwasher is more, it has to be sanitized, if you're doing P F S testing, you need to have a certain spec dishwasher, you expect a regular dishwasher. We think you need the higher-end dishwasher for that, it's not a, not, we're getting a three-tier dishwasher, so they can do their dinner, what's right.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Just want to make sure, we have a history on this one. Yeah.
He's going great. If we go into Staples, not even out.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact, no, fact is required, right, it's twenty, we're at twenty percent now of funding, that's, where'd you say, point?
Eighteen.
Yeah, this, as far as, yeah, it was like a point oh one percent increase, yeah.
Well, I'll take that ratio.
I'll take it, I just want to make sure that it's, the directive is not, we're looking in nicer to have better, to have stuff.
Well, to your point. Usually, change orders are initiated by the customer, right? Having been through this with housing and, and, you know, remodeling and all this stuff, it's, if you don't do your design more correctly at the beginning. You wind up, if you're a, a non-experienced builder. Saying at the end, oh, wow, wouldn't it be nice, is there a threshold? I mean, who approves the change orders? Where do they come from, and is there a person or a group of people, or is there a point at which it was ten thousand? Or twenty thousand, that, you know, we, you would have to get approval from, what's the approval process?
So the approval process is, is typically what amendment asks, I'm, I'm up to ten thousand dollars, Jim's up to fifty thousand dollars, anything that comes before. And, anything we've had so far, as they've said, has been somewhat minor, there, there are issues, it could come up, it could come up as a code issue. You know, the plumbing inspector may want something, the life span inspector may want something, and those are kind of the biggest issues. That'd be the issues we'd be dealing with, it's interpretation of the code, you know, it's probably the.
Some new regulation that.
Right.
They changed the regulation or something, and they say, we want this now, and, you know, it wasn't interpreted, it wasn't required when they did the design. But there's been nothing so far, like, with this come up, it's pending, but, and, believe me, Eric's here also, and I've already told him, you know. He knows, we're, we're.
Yeah.
Moving as, uh, getting as we can available.
And so we don't know any major revisions to the state building code, but could potentially be somewhere lurking out there. You know, they're always updating and changing and adding to, and it never gets cheap.
We have, we have a meeting Friday with the plumbing inspector, because he's talking about changing some of the floor drain stuff. Change floor drains, it's cost associated with it, and, you know, that's not something any of us want to do. So, we, they're, they come up every day, you know, little things, but we're hopefully never.
But to your question about the logistics, here's the way it goes on the job, the contractor receives something in the drawers or whatever. He submits what's called a request for information, it's just. This, you know, that, there's, there's, there's this space in the, in, in the kitchen, like, goes in there. Okay, and so the response to the R F I is, that's space reserved for the dishwasher, we're going to give you a spec for the dishwasher, cause it's. It's not there, they're not gonna have the electric, that goes out as a field order. That goes out as a field order, saying that, that gets added, we're up to field order six, right now, I think we're at field order six. And, and any given fielder can have eight or nine things in it, okay?
Right.
Little revisions on the drawer, a little whatever, I look at it, okay? They look at it, you know, we do this, you know, is this battle, is this, is this an ad, is this a credit, and then. It moves to what's called a P C L, proposed change order, where the contractor provides pricing back. Gets checked against, you know, reasonable hours, reasonable costs, and everything else. And then when everybody's in agreement about it, it gets packaged. You know, we couldn't walk through the six s- small changers, we just, until we had enough of these things worked out or resolved, we came to a change order number one. So, you know.
And we meet weekly, and that's part of the reason why we meet weekly, is to discuss if there are any changes.
Well, it's incredibly complicated, you know, incredibly complicated, I can have, but.
I had somebody come in today asking if they could look at the plans and specifications, and I showed them all, I'm like. Oh my god, this is, I just want to see a couple of things, but you, you know, how come you guys don't have it posted, like, online? One of the reasons they don't want to post it online is for security purposes, because sometime in the future.
This is a citizen asking a question.
So I spent about a half hour going over, going over some of the things that we missed.
Is there a restriction on the margin that the contractor, but you have, say, George, look at the margin?
I think it's ten, ten and five. Ten, ten percent and five percent over there.
True.
You know, point oh seven five, or point oh seventy percent one.
Alright. Our photos.
Yes, no, thank you. Uh, so for construction progress, uh, it was like this panoramic that was pieced together here, really showing the magnitude of. Uh, yep, the size of the treatment building footprint, the rebar that's in. Um, so to date, in the excavation for a recycled pump station water treatment building has been completed. Uh, foundation work has begun, concrete pours, and I mentioned last time, we have six thousand cubic yards of concrete that will be poured, or up to nine hundred that's been poured, so. They're doing segment by segment, um, throughout that space there, uh, but, yeah, so a lot of, a lot of progress and. That work that's taking place.
I assume that there's a testing of the concrete, I'm very sure.
Multiple times, I have third body, um, comes in, it does all the testing, plus, uh, we have a third body that is through a common contract, that's also up there watching, I'll see. So, and, um, we usually send out one of my guys also for a pull-up, just to. Check the check, just like the check-in, just to make sure it's all set up.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and given the, the size of the pores, we have two, you know, clusters out there, so they can work it as the trucks are coming in, especially with the larger pores, good. Great, and then, yeah, just had some additional photos to share, if you wanted to, I guess, move to the next page there. Oh, okay, yeah, I think I have one, oh, sorry. And one more back, there we go, uh, so, yeah, just showing the, yeah, thank you. Showing the progress of the recycled pump station, so you could see the, yep, formwork and rebar going in there. Um, you have the cold, you know, cold conditions that they're dealing with, pretty clear in those photos, um. So, what's shown there, that will all be below grade, so you can see the pipe penetration, um, for that recycled pump station there.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, this is a magical, it's not a recycled pump.
Oh, no.
It's a pump that recycles.
Yes, yes.
Well, I have.
Recycles the water.
That seems to need to be just like.
Yes, it's a new pump.
Didn't get enough heat.
It's a good pump, yeah, fire, no, it's a new pump.
That recycles things, yes, thank you.
Makes it more efficient, actually, operationally.
Yeah.
So, so this is actually the deepest portion of the, the job, the recycled pump station. It sits a little bit remotely from the rest of the facility, so that got pushed along early. And they're at the stage now where they've actually filled it with water to test if it's watertight. And we should have those results on Friday, cause it has to sit there for so many days. Uh, at which point then, you start to see a little bit of backfilling work around that, and it's starting to open up that section of the site for. Some grading and other things that will be happening.
So it's not up to.
So we fill it with water and let it sit for three days. The contractor's got his fingers crossed, goes there, you know, I love it.
Right, yeah.
Great, next one, that's great.
Yes, that's a good one.
That's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, this is great, yeah, so then, just.
That's control and safety.
Oh.
Oh, can you hear us, alright?
Okay, alright, that's awesome, I know. Uh, and then, yeah, showing like the garage areas, you can see the columns of the, the subgrade there, that's, um. Picture throughout, so, you know, the utilities that were installed below grade, well, this, this lab. And then the, yeah, process area of the treatment plant, so this is all in, seeing the stages, um, working through, as they're getting, um. Getting set for getting the rebar installed.
Wait for a second, you, you can see the amount of rebar that's in there, and that's probably this picture to the right. So, it's, it's built every, I mean, there's a lot of rebar and everything else in there, and you, you don't. Appreciate the pictures until you're up there and physically see the size of it, the amount of materials.
Is that somebody's house in the back there?
Yes.
I think it's a chessy hall.
Jamie, we are committed to planting a lot of screening, and you weren't on the board at the time, but. It was a lot, a lot, a lot of discussion, and so, um, if anyone out there is concerned about that. It will be taken here.
Good, we're gonna have some more bodies left, huh? Happy, happy to use them.
Alright, yeah, and, yeah, and you just, you know, as you can imagine, we have more concrete work to go. Um, they'll continue, you know, install site utilities, and as Steven was mentioning with the backfilling, and then we'll start. Um, this will be closer to June, but structural steel, um, you know, install, and starting to see the, the building build up. And, so this, mostly a repeat, but just wanted to, again, highlight like the commitment to communication on this project and. Outlining, you know, our daily, um, inspections, where we have our R P R, we have, you know, our concrete, we have our concrete testers, we have the rebar being inspected. We're making sure we're keeping, you know, sights on the, uh, eyes on the project, and have the right people out there, uh, taking. You know, quality notes and reporting back, um, so have our erosion control measures in place, so that's a daily inspection. And then weekly, we're getting our contractors three-week look-ahead schedule, doing the general permit site inspection reports. Then we're meeting weekly with the town, uh, so we have Kevin out there, Eric, other members of the town, Jim typically as well, uh, meet with. O P M, designing, you know, thus, the contractors, just making sure we're, you know, coordinating it, because ahead of time, like, am I saying any conflicts or, or costs? And then that weekly construction update gets prepared and submitted and posted to the town website. Uh, we have our progress meeting, so our last meeting was just on March sixth, and our next one is April third. And with that, we get a updated monthly, uh, project schedule from the contractor as well, that we, we review and make sure, you know, we're staying on track. Things can float within that schedule, uh, but the contractor, you know, owns, owns that piece, and, uh, we just. You know, we highlight, if you see something that seems concerning, but right now, no concerns, this is to be, you know, making the schedule.
And, and some folks in the public have asked this, and actually, we talked about this at one of the first meetings. Uh, I attended the, the news with tariffs and everything, uh, that. You explained a little why this wouldn't be affected, because of how the virtual thing is gone, um, just folks.
Sure, we, uh, we addressed that with the contractor, asking that very question, you always ask, what keeps us up at night, that was certainly a thing that does. Um, the contractor has bought out all the materials that we expect to be significantly impacted by the tariffs, uh, and other cost escalation, you know, the steel. The concrete, all, many of the other construction materials have already been bought out, so contracted to be supplied, and he's indicated no issue thus far.
That's no repurchase.
Yeah.
Alright, we got ahead of, another reason to get ahead of the curve, I'm glad we got out to bid when we did.
Yes.
You can't possibly know the answer to this question that I'll ask it anyway. Is it all been delivered over the border?
Love it. Great question, I know, I, I.
So, so the biggest, the biggest, I'm gonna ask you a question, the biggest issue with the things going on is steel. But all steel has to be American steel on a job like this, right from the get-go, so no steel is coming through over the board. Okay, and we're not using much in the way of lumber, it's concrete and steel and masonry, so, um.
It's gotta come with this work.
Yeah, it's for, um.
Well, just, no, there is, things you couldn't imagine happening, ever, are happening. So, I'm just, you know, if, if it gets stopped at that bridge, wherever it is in Toronto.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there, there's always, I mean, there's.
Anything can happen, I hope.
There'll be like some little controller for the get. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always, I mean, there's situations, there'll be, there'll be like some little control for the get, some little control, if they get tied up at some spot, we'll, we'll work around and solve.
The three acreage, that's the one.
I'm good, thank you.
Appreciate that.
I asked my questions, thank you, and I appreciate the weekly updates, and folks should check that out because there's pictures too. Well, thank you.
Good, thank you, appreciate the updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say one last thing, I mean, so we applied in by looking for visuals.
Yeah.
At some point, as you mentioned, structural steel will start going up into the garage jet. That's down the indication to you that we're gonna be moving into another element or another phase.
That's a good, yeah, yeah.
So I think that's an easy visual to somebody to see the steel going up.
It's probably about a day.
That would resist for four to, four to eight weeks, playing with the steel coming up.
So it's still, it's close to them.
Steel is alive, because I think the order and survival is story.
Well, I believe the Los Angeles, a lot more man need them there, and a lot more towns that couldn't even do what they're doing plans of.
We feel like we're.
Of course we are, we absolutely are. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Appreciate your time.
That was your pitch at the beginning, because you listed the pipeline, you know, one of the actions.
We're Sean, but I saw.
Sean's still here, honestly, I'm here, well, yes.
Well, we have another exciting job. Sean, we're not getting the bid out, pushing trail. It did go out, we had a lot of bidders between Saxons, and we had a low bid of a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred dollars from Paulson Corp. Checked their references, everything seemed okay, and we're looking over the project and get it started. That's the trail right up back here.
Nice, and money on the C P C.
That's our plan, because I will probably have somebody out watching with the gas company, as well as watching what's on the C W O. We probably have to pay to have a construction observer on that project, which takes a lot of C P C months.
I don't have questions on these for a minute.
I think it's great, let's just get it done. Thank you. We love how many bidders. That's why we tried to bid in February and March before everybody gets involved, and gets busy. Unbelievable, and what a difference. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's amazing how someone. It, just think I hooked it on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes, ten. Ten bidders. We love them all, please bid again. But I'll take a motion.
We'll put a slot for voting for the contact to Paulson Corporation for the student school trail rate foundation for one hundred and seven thousand dollars and seven, one hundred and seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
We're just going to tell second about the. Just modeling. All those endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I think that's it for us, right? Little contracts in there that I didn't realize?
No.
Thanks.
Nancy, we got you, Rena Rowe here.
Four gates.
All right, Jim is, he's going into the sunset.
Four, four, four men. So it's, oh, yeah, I'm just trying to get idea about you.
I'm still here, but I'll let Nancy carry all the. All the heavy stuff.
Left, I'll just begin this app. So the RFP that the town issued for proposals for reusable old gates for housing, a portion of old gates housing, mainly building D, which is the middle section. That was due on March fifth, we did receive a single proposal, even though we had two walk-throughs with many people. Another group, COA, did reach out to us and said the numbers just didn't work for them, and they were sad if they couldn't participate. The one proposal that town received was from the Granton Group, and their proposal was for a sixty-three unit, a hundred percent affordable aid restricted senior residential building, to be noticed in eight apartments. So I wanted to see if the board was interested, we could schedule Granton Group to come in, perhaps at your next meeting, and go over their proposal to see if there's any interest in it.
Sure.
Granton Group has a good reputation.
Even the Los Angeles.
Yeah.
Thank you, I definitely have questions on this. Because it's all, it's sixty-three units of one bedroom senior housing, basically. And what we were told when we went into this was that there, there was less state money and grants, whatever, for the senior housing, and more so for the multi-generation. So I do have some like questions and concerns, but I, I'd love to talk with the people proposing. Yeah, I mean, like, we need housing, I'm not gonna say it's not like the perfect thing I want, I have, but we still need housing. I just have concerns about funding, if, if that information was correct that we heard last time. But I mean, and the price is, was it five hundred thousand per, if you divide it by the total price, what was the price they gave us for sixty-three units was?
Thirty-two million.
Thirty-two million.
But if you just take the town portion, which I think is the five million, that actually comes up to an investment by town of seventy-nine thousand per unit.
Correct.
If I may address your issue about the multifamily housing. The only thing I can say about that is that although the, the state is requiring us to zone for multifamily housing.
Right.
They're not giving us one single cent, not one. They're not even considering any of that to be going toward our affordable housing stock. The, if I recall correctly, on the MBTA, we have a ten percent, I believe it's ten percent affordable, that we agreed to do. But I think, I think we could have done as much as twenty, but I'm, I'm speaking on a lot of term here. But at any rate, the, the Commonwealth is not exactly incentivizing us, other than through hitting us over the head with making zoning changes, that they're not gonna help us.
I completely agree with you. I'm just putting up a point that like, I hope it succeeds, right? Or I want it to succeed, I don't hope, I, we have to ask the question so that we know.
I agree, I agree, it's just, it's, it's when all I can say is, you know, maybe the hope is, is that people will move out of their, you know, three bedroom ranches and move into this smaller housing, but I, I, when you look at the affordability component of it, I don't know, you know, if people who have a ranch, which is now going situated at like seven hundred thousand dollars.
They're not gonna.
Whether they're gonna qualify.
They won't qualify.
Yeah, so.
But, I mean, but the question at hand is not to like review the whole thing now, the question is, should we invite them in to have a discussion? And I actually think it wasn't a bad proposal, I mean, it was actually a good proposal.
A great architect.
They've done work with us before, that yes, you, the, the proposal, and I'll give the lift notes, is you would have to tear the building down, but they put up a building that looked pretty darn close to the front of it, right? So, I mean, I do think they understand the community's history of concerns with that. And I mean, it's a sharp looking place, building, and they've done work for us before, and it's fifty-three units that we didn't have before. So I think it's worth a, a larger discussion to make sure like the community also can ask questions as well. And we can like post proposals if people agree with the proposal too.
I hundred percent agree, yeah. Yes, I think we should have them come in and talk this. Would you like my rationale?
You're so cheap, Shannon. It is up here.
No, I mean, my rationale is very simple, it, it's, we have a facility that's vacant for six years.
Yes, thousand six.
Yeah, for six years, that we've made it a priority to address. And we have given, we put out the RFP specifically for this type of proposal, and as Susan says, it, it checks a lot of the boxes, and they are a known and quality developer that we have great connection with. So yes, I think we should bring them in and ask all the rest of the questions, and see if we take it to the back of.
They check out, they're a good group, and they're using a great architect. And I, I know the reality was, try and preserve the best of everything, but this, this looks like they can actually build this, they're, they're gonna, they'll survive, and the town will not have to put up a lot of money. So, let's, let's walk them in, put them through the thirty million questions.
Well, I have to say, we have, as far as I know, we've heard not a peep from any of the tenants of Los Angeles Green about anything. And so, and Granton Group is the.
The only thing I can hear from them is they're not allowed to have pets, no dogs. Which is a man.
They can take that up with the Granton Group.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want us to hear how they can say.
They do, so it looks pretty good.
Let's make sure we can post the proposal. Yeah. That way folks can see it, so. Yeah, and then, we'll be, it's not a repeater. Are there any questions? I saw, no, that was Jen, any questions for the audience, and I guess you're there, yes.
If they tear down the gate school, what, what happened to the recreation center? Is that all, is that part of the cash?
Two things, one, just so Shari, you have a name and address, I'm divorced, ask people for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Grace Ferguson, thirty-seven, Dr. Sochar. And I'm with the food.
Got it, so for this current proposal has maintaining the rec, the gym and that, the center on the side, and also the, all tennis courts, so all that remains.
I think they call it decoupling or something.
Decoupling, so you kind of, tear it down and then remake it.
Separate it, the heat issue.
And it looks, when you see the photos, it looks, they're trying to recreate the look of it. Because the issue's on the inside, it's all the asbestos, nastiness.
Can you put this on going?
Yep.
Yeah.
This is now, so now we can put it on the line.
So you can look, it's, it's quite a, I think, impressive proposal, just when you look at it, and I think they've been very thoughtful about some of the questions that we would all have.
Well, I think it's a great idea, so you have, I have, one cloud, I don't really have any issues with that. My issue is, can we be, we be in place?
Well, nothing great on this proposal, is my understanding, because he won't be the basis. That is one of the questions that I will have, is, is for us to stop this, we're retaining the A wing, which is underutilized right now. What, we're gonna cost, and what are we gonna use that facility for? Because REC is not using that much, so. And I know that Ward is very mindful of current use in building this weekend, so I would think that would be part of the conversation, if that appropriate place. Wade, you know, those questions are down there on my line for sure.
Yes.
Now, if I'm to check, I'll get that a little bit straight. Will the field, uh, do you wanna? So what about?
Modified.
What about the sixty-three buildings?
So half the field, okay, let me par that back. I don't know exactly this work footage, but the field is certainly modified, so it's not as large as it was. So the parking would, yes, be kind of like in the outfield where it is now, but somebody have a small or more like a soccer field and a track, I couldn't think of the word, track.
Yeah.
And they specifically mentioned the senior center parking was left as not part of what they would need for parking, and that that was.
Added a hundred fifty.
Yeah, they added parking, and that it was, they were not counting any of that parking. But I do think we should post it online in preparation for when we have a meeting. Because it's, I mean, it's what, like thirty-five pages or something? Yeah, it's a good document, there's a lot of pictures, and it's really like, it's a lot clearer when you read it. Because they use the, the graphics are used, so I just thought I'd see to that.
Well, I think to your point, that you should have this meeting, at least one public meeting in a big enough venue, so that the, it, it, it's in the, like, basement or the library or wherever it is, that's big enough so that people can actually see these things, because I think when you're online, even, it's like you've been a little teeny tiny. And this is a big deal, this is a big deal.
Oh, great.
So I, I think if we can make a.
We should have them come in, let them talk, and then let's plan a big, a big event.
Right, yeah, we think this is where lobby.
Right, right, yeah. But the question now, it's definitely worked off to continue the conversation, because that's our question.
Yes, continue the conversation, and then answer our question. Again, beyond that, then we give the opportunity.
Other deadlines for this, with these people? Okay, so we've got, we can make it for, all right, do you, how you'd like about, or just?
No, I just wanted to know if you want to schedule it, and we'll take care of that.
All right, bye then. All right, digital legal notices, love it.
I don't want that. So the next, the, the next two agenda items are cost savings and verging generating penalty. So right now, we spend a significant amount of money in legal advertising that will require to do by debt, various statutes. In fiscal twenty-three, just for those at home, fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine, fif- fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty in fiscal twenty-four, and we were up to almost thirteen thousand in fiscal twenty-five. Town Council sent out their monthly newsletter with all things that are happening in Townhouse and Land. And one of the things they mentioned was that the town of Lincoln, the town of Arlington, had this special legislation passed where they got permission to do print-free digital legal notices, and they need like six auctions of how you could meet those. So I looked at both of them and kind of came up with our version for the town's situation, to see if this is something that the board would like to pursue as special legislation, and if so, we would then give it to one of our legislators and say, make it happen, please.
I think this is a great idea, I mean, that's like amazing, like, nobody is reading the whatever twelve thousand dollars was spent.
It costs about four to five hundred dollars for everything we put out to bid.
It's, it's, I am all for it.
It's mixed mental decards for.
Yes.
I am too, however, and will say it is the debt now for print. This is it, this is it.
There's a lot of that, okay.
There's nothing else, even O B S are almost all online now. I mean, it's, it's, this is it, it's over.
It is true.
It's our fault.
Of course it is our fault, but it is. As a town subsidize it when nobody else.
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you, it's over for print. I mean, because that is the only guaranteed source of income that, that, not that there are any newspapers left, mind you.
Well, that's the other, because when you're posting, where are you posting, right?
Usually I go for a budget.
Well, that's your waste of anything left, really.
Yeah, I mean, just reading the coastal mayor or whatever it's named.
Wherever you can find it.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, I, it's just a, a sad moment in the, the history of media.
Shall we have a moment?
Yeah, it's gonna be situable in advertising, that's gonna break with that.
It's not gonna pass through, so like, two years.
Oh, that's true. The rate was which are.
We should do it.
We should do it. Probably five years.
We should do it, I'm just.
Yeah.
In the, you know.
Yeah. They're well. All right, thank you for bringing it to us, Nancy.
Shall we make the motion?
Please.
Move to file special legislation similar to the town of Lincoln, allowing the town to opt for other options opposeded to meet legal requirements of new of print newspapers.
So you got more seconds than five, Ms. Simpson, all that paper, all good, bye. And also thank you to our difference in Lincoln for spearheading.
Yes.
We'll give you credit for being the lead.
I didn't know I read Town Council's.
If I could just shine one thing in real quick, what, one other thing we could do is we could ask our legislators to amend the municipal empowerment act to make that an option for all municipalities.
So we really gonna single-handedly pick up that?
That's right.
So just two ways to do it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Whatever way that they feel us to serve, the best way.
I a hundred percent support that. I guess it's just like a death fight, and while they're out of it, they should take it and just let it work.
All right.
If the board doesn't mind, I'm gonna sign off now, as much as I want.
Yes.
Thanks. Good night.
Back to your contribution.
You'll be first in line.
I wanted to end the evening with small fuzzy birds. Um, so this is the potential revenue generating portion of the evening. We discussed, um, the plover monitoring has gotten ridiculous. Uh, in fiscal eighteen, it was thirty-five hundred, and we came before you, uh, probably a month and a half ago, two months ago. We did up over fifty thousand dollars for two years of plover monitoring, which the board.
Well, we reissued it. It's a bright story.
We, we met with somebody who was interested in doing it, and their group was even higher. And then we put a backup, it's slightly modified for a single year, and we got a bid back of nineteen thousand, so Jim has avoided that contract. Because plover season, plover season, what do you wanna call them, is here.
But there are other people interested that we could get their agi, kind of, so.
They're not very close.
There's plovers in the road. There's plovers in the road.
And I did reach out to all of the entities that are on the state report who buy all these reports, and one of them was interested, but decided not to offer a bid, so.
Could, oh, so could this be another thing that we consider talking to? One of the county, the regional solution, we're the only piping plover.
No, just berries.
No, but.
Oh, there's others.
But.
Let's move that further immediately.
Sure, why should we?
The vendor, the vendor we have, that's many of them. So, as you can see, rising costs. So, trying to think outside the box, and this is being like a common outside the box. Um.
He's really good.
It's really, I can tell you right now, there is no clip art for plover in box.
Plover.
No, because that would be a violation of the board's uh.
Yeah, right, right.
So.
Teaching on AI.
I talked to um the head of the purity for the municipal law bureau, Division of Local Services, Partner Revenue, to see if we could actually do this, and he said we could. So if the board wanted to go down this route, the board could tackle the costs of the ever-growing plover uh monitoring, plover monitoring um contract by establishing a gift account for the monitoring of plovers. The revenues into such gift account would be funds received, subscriptions to plover updates, and interest earned on the revenues, and the expenses would be for the contract or the cost for monitoring reporting. And what you would get for a plover watch campaign subscription would be a weekly email subscription service for those interested in the state of situat plovers. Um, subscription, I was thinking a hundred dollars per season. Um, maybe a stupid first subscription, since we have a ornithology class over at the high school. Um, it would be a weekly email with updated pictures of Situate's own plovers, plovers?
AVR oysters.
Uh.
Well, they're on it.
No. Um, but it is in the current vendor's contract to give us weekly updates, so we can acquire them to give us pictures of the plovers.
Well, that was my question. He's gonna do these weekly updates.
I can do the weekly update. I volunteer to do the plover.
But you're not out there taking plover pictures.
No, 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 that's, it's in the contract that they have to.
They have to send it.
Okay, so we work with them to, they have an education component. This would be their education component.
Well, yeah, if it's twenty, you might as well twenty thousand.
You might as well make them work.
Right, get the photos and.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I left off the, the sadness of the coyote eating, uh, but we would, we would couch that appropriately.
Because people just donate anyway. If they're like, oh, I wanna give you like, I wanna give you five hundred dollars.
We, we could take donations as well.
This is, okay.
Yeah, the gift account. That's interesting.
It's a gift account. I think it's great. I mean, people donate to like Shalva Shalva. I think it's a great idea then. Thank you.
I, I learned more about piping plover.
Now that I know that the town doesn't have to spend time going out and taking pictures of plovers, I'm good.
You know, I did, I was like, we'd rather opt just have some anti, because it's all coyotes.
What else?
The coyote thing.
I know.
Coyote big.
We need a tiny coyote, deer, right? Not a deer, I love it.
And by the way, the picture down in the corner is actually little tiny plovers coming out of their eggs.
Aww.
So.
Okay, and if anyone from the ornithology class determines these are turns, I don't wanna hear it. I call them plovers. What's that?
Pology.
That paw.
They're so cute. They said, there's a ton of them on baskets. There's.
Motion?
Yes.
I'll just leave that there, so you can.
I just want like a cute little plover.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'll get a question.
Could we make this simpler?
You can do whatever you want.
I personally think that a one-time, you know, mailing, not even mailing, a one-time something on our website, something that we send out from the town, explaining the plight of the plovers and what it's costing the town, et cetera. I mean, you know, we're, we're up against, I'm sorry to say, Rural Wildlife Federation. Will we make it T-shirts simple? I think that, I think that if we just say to people, just like we do for some other gift accounts, that, you know, this is a concern of the town. If you would like to help us out, to create a cost, if you could make a contribution, this is what it costs us on a yearly basis to do it, and anything we contribute would be great. I just don't wanna see you have to spend your time doing, I'm sorry, plover updates, if we can put it on.
But this was so much fun. Somebody. Nancy lost animals.
Yes.
Well, I.
I have cats that'll eat the plovers.
I know, cats are a good thing. That doesn't.
I just think the less work it is, the better, and we'll probably get similar results.
I fully agree. If someone wants to take it on and it's a passion project.
Okay.
Love it. I'd like to get some with you. It just, it's gonna be mostly.
I'm, I'm sorry, I will say this. Send, send, send me our school train room phone with a message about the plight of your locals.
Oh, the ornithology class was out there today.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion. It's an educational thing too.
Spread the word, yeah.
Education. I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman. Yes, make the. Move to create a gift fund for plover monitoring to include donations, including subscription service fee to Situate Plover Watch, vote on plover. Of one hundred dollar per season, the gift fund would retain any interest earned on the revenues credited to it. Expenses from the gift fund would be to pay the contract for the monitoring agent.
Second.
So just to be clear, so people can just donate?
Yeah.
Yes.
Send them one. On the back.
Just, yeah, if.
I'm, I, I, I have to look that.
Okay. Uh, so, excuse me, so there's a move, is there no more second than five?
I second it.
Sarah's in? David?
Aye.
Aye. One of us. One of us, there.
Um, sorry, I can remember this, maybe we can add this to like the, the day again, let's have, if somebody was calling up and saying they went on or. Yeah, and Suzie, they can donate to plover.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, yes, that's a great thing. Name a plover. Do you hear a little plover?
I wasn't going there because, yeah, things could happen. I was gonna do the individual sponsors, but.
We can't add.
Nope.
Because they're giving you.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a plover? Do you have brain layers for those?
Book, 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 I'm licensed for light pro contracting and general and heat over on fabric. Second.
It's a cable server. It's Conle, but the table.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, liaison reports. I don't have one, but it's gonna be a busy weekend with uh, I'm on a journey and all of that. St. Patrick's Day parade. Oh, the parade, that's right. And I know you guys aren't watching it, but we'll be waiting to. Oh, I'll be, I have. Oh, you changed your trip? Locked her, it's locked up. Uh, what else?
Um, the uh, peer forty-four committees had a very seductive meeting with the conservation commission. Uh, they've been waiting for a, a peer report of, and not a full-blown peer report, but someone to get the stormwater management issue done up here. But they're, they're fine, they're fine. Stormwater was a huge problem, but um, they, I, I did hear from them that it was the best presentation they've ever seen. Um, because they literally, they thought everything, so, but they think through the mill, which who thought?
They're everything.
So that, that will happen, and then their next stop is the planning board. Is that us? Actually, I think I was speaking with it. I have one.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go.
Um, the Chamber of Commerce is going to be hosting a talk of the town or, I think, or the, the state of the town kind of thing. Where they wanna be mostly focused on what the business community should know about the coming year. They'd like to pull that in May. And they'll be inviting our town administrator and these uh, all there, and a member of the board or two to come in with a focus of what that may have been, or enough to build a couple of bridges and, you know, anything that impacts them. And the other is Heritage Day, their subcommittee on Heritage Day met the financials last week, I think, or recently. And uh, they are most likely going to go back on Front Street for two blocks or so for Heritage Day this year. It's a fully reconstituted group and.
They're gonna request that.
They're, they're going to propose that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they'll come for us, obviously, with the flesh and all that, but it's, it, I think, works, it's likely going to be recommended to us. And then, and then, our, our, we'll have to have that conversation. That's the news. May I ask the Chamber of Commerce, please, on a question, please?
Of course you may.
Are they going to do a candidates forum? I mean, I know Andrew and I have been fondly of the candidates forum, and there hasn't been one in years.
No, I didn't want.
That was the chair.
When I ran, I had a candidate.
Oh, you did?
I did. That was the last one. No, I wasn't opposed to this till.
It was the chamber. I didn't think it was, it was the chamber.
Nobody asked for it.
No, it's the chamber.
It was at Gar Hall. My, what one I did was Gar Hall.
Yeah, the chamber, it was chamber.
Yeah, they, I will, I will. Somebody should do one this year.
Definitely.
I think it would be healthy, would be very.
Yeah, especially since we should get quite a few people running.
I do have, I do have correspondence, Chair, if you want. Listeners. First of all, I'll let a shout-out to Mike Green, the DPW, because we did have a nasty storm on Friday night, and some of us had trees flying around the streets and power down, and and their teams were experts. And where I thought we were gonna be out of power for two days, they restored it that evening. With, like, there were three poles down in that area, plus trees. It looked like a wardrobe, and it was all and they were out there again this morning, doing the fine detail work. So, thank you, DPW, Mike Green, and all your guys. That was wonderful. So for, for respondents, we have a change of address to the Department of Telecommunications in Gable. I have a new address here from the Commonwealth that we would like to have. We have a letter from the governor to James Boudreau that certifies contingent upon legislative approval of one point five billion dollars, multi-year bond authorization signatures, chapter ninety, appointed for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is eight hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and fourteen cents. So that's pretty cool. Chapter ninety increased. And then, last but not least, our grant report card for Situate, January twenty twenty-five through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, so far. One seventeen eighty-eight municipal group capital grant, hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars, eighty-eight improvements in Watertown School. And then February twenty-seventh, municipality vulnerability grant. Conduct MVP two point oh planning process and implement climate resilience project, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, there you go.
Do we have unanimous?
I don't know what.
I'm not that, that might be there. You want to approve the unanimous of March the twenty-fifth?
February.
February twenty.
We're not there yet.
Right, and as promised, I just can't tell if all of those are favorable. I know I still stand, because I wasn't here. And one, that's tension. Unanimous. Or should do a adjourn?
Okay.
Oh, dinner, aye, unanimous.